Nope, ich war mutter. Hallo! Guten Abend! Hallo zu Chrono, hallo zu Actionproduktion! Willkommen in! Ich hoffe, ihr habt einen guten Freitag. Hallo mutter! Ich war es und jetzt nicht. Also, ich hatte einen guten Freitag. Ich meine, der Büro war relativ... leere. Und auch, wie random, als ich nach Hause kam von Arbeit, habe ich erkannt, dass jemand mir ein paar Thron-Items gekauft hat, aber keinen Namen. Also, Anonymous, wenn ihr da seid. Vielen Dank! Ich weiß bereits, dass der Dog-Drool von Chrono kam, obwohl das eine said "anonymous", okay? Ich werde mit euch real sein. Ich bin einfach, ihr wisst, auf dem DL, ich will es einfach real machen. Ich weiß, es war ihr, Chrono, die den Dog-Drool gekauft hat. Aber ich weiß nicht, wer den Cabbage Patch Pups gekauft hat. Und auch den... den Tee. Baselless accusations! Ich glaube, es war der Tee, den ich auf... Ich glaube, es war Turrets' Empfehlung für Milchtee, für wie... Black-Milch-Tee, also ich bin gespannt. Um fair zu sein, ihr habt den Dog nicht gekauft, ihr Drool, ihr Chicken. Ich habe den Dog nicht gekauft, weil es sehr... schlimm war. Ich meine, ich glaube, es wird schlimm sein, aber ich meine, seitdem... seitdem ihr es gekauft habt, werde ich es auf dem Kanal trinken. Schlimme Menschen. So schlimm. Aber... Nein, nur eins, ihr Witz! Ich weiß nicht, ob ich so viel Platz in meinem Bauch für vier Liquiden habe. Jeez, vier Kisten von Liquiden. Also, vielen Dank für das, Chrono. Und auch für Anonymous, wenn ihr da seid. Vielen Dank. Ich werde auch antworten. Ich sollte "vielen Dank"-Messagen senden, auf Twitter und Thron, also ich werde das später heute晚晚上做, hoffentlich. Aber ja, Empty, hallo! Heute lernen wir etwas Deutsch. Ich habe die Arbeitspass next Woche und die Woche nachher auch. Also... Ich wollte wenigstens wissen, wie ich mich herunterherstellen muss, wenigstens wissen, wie ich mein Essen in Deutsch bestellen kann. Also, ich bin nicht wie ein dummes Amerikaner, mich zu enttäuschen. Ja, und wie das Bad, also das ist das Ziel, richtig? Wie... Wie "hi, mein Name ist Prinzessin, ich bin aus Kalifornien, ich möchte einen oder zwei dieser Trinken." "Wo ist das Bad? Ich möchte eine Tasse Wasser, bitte", ihr wisst. Ist es kein Englisch für das Essen? Ja, es ist. Und ich bin sicher, wir werden Englisch auf dem Essen sehen, aber... Ihr wisst, wenigstens wie... Ich weiß nicht, wenn ihr reist, sogar wenn es für Arbeit ist, ich möchte mich erinnern, ihr wisst, und sehen, was es alles umfasst. Nein, Prinzessin, für zwei ganze Wochen. Es wird eigentlich nur eine Woche und vielleicht ein paar Tage. Also, ich leave next Friday und ich werde am Sonntag, der Woche nachher, also eine Woche und zwei Tage. Prinzessin möchte ihre Polyglott-Kraft zeigen. Nur um zu sagen: "Ja, ich habe gelernt, wie ich diese eine Sache sage." Und dann werden meine Kollegen in Deutschland wie: "Oh, speckenzie deutsch!" Und ich werde wie: "Nein!" Wie sage ich nein? "Keine speckenzie Deutsch!" Keine speckenzie Deutsch! Skuff! Wenigstens eine XenoBlade3-Kanal bevor die zwei Wochen abgefangen sind. Ja, es wird morgen eine weitere Kanal für XenoBlade3 geben, bevor... ihr wisst, wir müssen weg. Aber... Lass uns... Lass uns über dieses Bild springen. Ich meine, technisch finde ich, dass ihr euch sowieso das gehabt habt, was ihr gewählt habt, was ein Handkam-Kanal war. Ist es dieses? Ups! Ich bin auf Twitter, sorry. Da geht es. Technisch habt ihr euch das gehabt, was ihr gefragt habt, was ein Handkam-Kanal war. Also... Ich meine, das ist ein bisschen ähnlich, richtig? Ich bin nicht, ich bin nicht süßes Dinge und wie Glänzende Sachen, aber ich habe hier ein Notbuch. Also, wir werden... Noten nehmen und hoffentlich, da ist es ein pretty small notebook, richtig? Ich kann es einfach mit mir nehmen, es nimmt nicht viel Platz. Und ich glaube, ich habe das an Daiso, wie Jahrzehnte und Jahrzehnte vorher. Es hat wie ein Telefonnummer in es, auf der ersten Seite. Ich weiß nicht, was das Telefonnummer ist. Vielleicht war es die Telefonnummer für Planet Fitness, als ich zurückkam, weil... Ich weiß genau, warum ich dieses Notbuch gekauft habe. Ich habe dieses Notbuch, um Übungen zu schreiben, die ich im Gym would do. Und so meine Abmessen und Set für jede Besuch. Aber dann... Ich habe es nie gemacht. Ich bin wie, ich bin gerade zum Gym und ich habe nichts aufgenommen, so. Ich liebe diesen Blick auf etwas zu zeigen und für VTubing. Oh, ich bin froh, ich bin froh, ihr enjoying es. Warum nicht einfach sagen: "Ich spreche Englisch in einem tiefen Kalifornien-Girl-Akkent?" Ich weiß nicht, was das bedeutet. Wie habe ich einen tiefen Kalifornien-Akkent? Ich spreche keinen tiefen Akkent. Gym? Was ist ein Gym? Meine Pokémon-Gym. Habt ihr es versucht, es zu nennen? Nein, weil ich gerade dieses Notbuch gefunden habe, wie 30 Minuten vorher. Also... Okay, also... Lass uns dieses Video einfach sehen und ich werde nur, ihr wisst, lass mich wissen, ob das Video zu laut ist oder die Hintergrundmusik zu laut ist. Ich kann meinen Mikrofonvolumen nicht korrigieren, also werde ich alles unten korrigieren, wenn das der Fall ist. Also lass es mich wissen, okay? Oh, habe ich... Warum ist das offen? Da geht es. Mein Freund hat ein guter Japaner-Sprecher mit einem Cowboy-Akkent gemacht. Ich bin sicher, wenn ich es gehört hätte, könnte ich es kopieren, aber ich bin auch nicht gut mit Akkents. Okay. Wo ist meine Maus? Was ist das? Okay, da geht es. Wie heißt du? Wie heißt du? Ich glaube, das ist wie sie es gesagt hat. Wie heißt du? Ich werde nie... Ich werde nie das fragen, richtig, an meinen Mitarbeiter, weil sie sich einfach selbst herunterherstellen. Ich heiße... Aber ich werde das sagen müssen. Warte, ich werde es ein wenig zurückkehren. Ich, wie heißt du? Wie heißt du? Wie heißt du? Ich heiße Angela. Ich heiße Angela.
Mein Name ist Rosie.
Das ist einfach! Mein Name ist Rosie. Okay, warte, lass mich zurückkehren. Oh mein Gott! Wie heißt du? Ich heiße... Ich heiße Prinzessin. Ich finde, ich habe dieses Pfeil testet, bevor ich begann, also... Ich... Hai... Wie seid ihr? Okay, das ist ein weird little B-Ding. Heiß... Name. Ich werde das machen. Okay, also... Ich, es ist wie... CK, ich heiße... Ich? Also wie ich... Heiß... Ich heiße... Und dann Name. Und dann war dieser Mann so wie: "Mein Name ist Rosie." Ich heiße Angela.
Mein Name ist Rosie.
Mein Name ist, ist... Rosie. Hallo, Sohn, willkommen in! Wie seid ihr? Hallo, Prinzessin, wunderbar, wetter, happy? Ich weiß nicht, ich bin sorry, ich weiß nicht, wie ich das lesen kann. Hallo, Sohn, willkommen in, guten Abend, wie seid ihr? Ich hoffe, ihr habt einen guten Freitag. Okay. Mein... Nam... Ist... Und dann Name. Okay, also mein... Mein? Ich meine, es hört sich einfach wie mein in Englisch aus. Mein... Und dann ist dieses Name. Nam... Ist... Wie sagt er es? Er sagt es wie... Wie heißt du? Wie heißt du? Ich heiße Angela. Ich heiße Angela.
Mein Name ist Rosie.
Es ist wirklich nur Ist mit einem T am Ende. Okay. Gut... Zun... Du? Ich weiß nicht. Hallo, ich bin gut. Ich bin gut? Ich wollte sagen, es ist euer Name, aber es ist eigentlich Rosca. Ja, es ist sehr nah an meinen Namen. Also, wann lernen wir Kanto? Ich weiß nichts über Cantonis. Ich glaube, oh, ich weiß! Shikfan! Ich weiß nur Shikfan. Ist das, ist das Cantonis? Shikfan? Dinner time? Wow, dieses Ding ist so wobbelig. Ich bin sorry, wenn die Kamera ein bisschen wie Wibblewobble ist. Ich heiße Julie. Ich, ich heiße Julie. Ich, ich heiße...
Ich heiße David.
Ich heiße David.
Ich heiße Emilio.
Er hat einfach "heiße Emilio" gesagt. Er hat sogar den "ich" gesagt. Heiße Emilio!
Ich heiße Louis.
Dieser "scha" geht einfach "scha Louis"! Sch Louis! Ich heiße Arido. Ich heiße... Ich finde, er hat seine Name gesagt! Ich heiße Eleni. Ich heiße Pauli. Ich heiße Pauli. Ich ist formal, wenn ich es erinnere. Nein, ich glaube, das ist formal. Ich weiß, formal, die andere Stelle. Die wie... Der "nein, zu sehen euch". Es gibt wie ein formal und ein informal, aber ich glaube, ich heiße es einfach wie... Jeder verwendet es für "ich bin". Ich heiße Lydia Löfler. Lydia Löfler. Woher kommst du? Whoa, warte, das war neu. Ich komme erst... Kommst du? Oh, warte. Auch umweg, hallo Creed, willkommen in, wie seid ihr? Es ist wie die Matashi abrissen. Woher kommst du? Woher kommst du? Ich komme erst Thüringen. Oh shit, wie ist es? Ich komme erst Thüringen. Lydia Löfler. Woher kommst du? Woher kommst du? Woher kommst du? Nicht wirklich ein "du", es ist wie "du". Woher kommst du? Ich finde, ich habe wie dieses Ding, wenn ich versuche, Dinge zu sprechen. Ich finde, ich habe einfach etwas in meinem Mund. Warte, warum ist das so wibblywobbly? Kannst du so viel wickeln? Ich muss tatsächlich ein echtes Stand für das kaufen, damit es das nicht tut. Okay, sowieso. Ich komme erst Thüringen. Ich komme aus Thüringen. Okay, also ich komme, ich komme von? Ich... 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 Komme aus Thüringen. Ups, ich habe das falsch gespelt. Ich habe es weggelassen. Ich glaube, ich habe es. Warte. Unter meinem Acrylstand. Ja, da ist es. Ich komme aus Thüringen. K-M-M-E. O. Okay, also ich... Ich... Komme... Aus, wie aus, aus Thüringen. Well, wir haben keine andere Wahl, als den Text zu rippeln. Nein, wir tun das nicht. Warte, schnell, ich muss tatsächlich eine dieser Dinge überführen. Also lass mich einfach das pausieren, weil ich kann't, ich kann't das ohne wie... hinter den Schatten machen, also ich muss das schnell überführen, damit ihr es nicht sieht. Hallo, chick Inu, vielen Dank für den Headpad. Hallo, willkommen in, wie seid ihr? Guten Abend! Ich hoffe, ihr seid gut. Nichts zu sorgen, unsere Immersion ist bereits zerbrochen. Oh, ist es, weil ich Fleischhände habe? Wirkliche Fleischhände? Okay. Ich komme aus Thüringen.
Ich komme aus der Schweiz.
Ich komme aus der Schweiz. Der Schweiz. Ich komme aus der Schweiz. Ich komme aus Frankreich. Ich komme aus Frankreich. Wie seid ihr? Wie macht ihr das mit deiner Mund? Lady! Wie macht ihr das? Aus Frankreich. Frankreich.
Ich bin halb Mexikaner. Ich bin halb...
Frankreich. Ich komme aus Frank...
Schweiz.
Ich komme aus Frankreich. Ich komme aus Frankreich. Ich komme aus Frankreich.
Ich bin halb Mexikaner und halb Deutscher.
Oh, ich bin halb... Mexikaner und halb Deutscher. Ihr braucht nicht die Wörter für Frank. Ihr seid okay. Ich bin auf dem Super-Thesis-Grind jetzt, also ich stresse ein wenig, aber ich werde vielleicht okay sein. Ich bin sorry, chick Inu, aber ich bin sicher, ihr seid gut mit eurem Thesen. Well, buckle in, wir studieren gerade heute, also ihr seid in guter Kompanie. Wir nehmen Noten. Praktizieren Deutsch, weil ich möchte meinen Kollegen beeindrucken. Ihr braucht nicht die Wörter für Frank, ihr seid okay.
Ich bin halb Mexikaner und halb Deutscher. Ich komme aus München.
Ich komme aus München. Ich komme aus München. Ich komme aus Berlin. Ich komme aus Berlin. Ich auch. Ich auch. Also, wenn ich sagen würde, Kalifornien, ich, ich, ich komme aus Kalifornien. Mit dem besten, mit dem besten Kalifornien-Girl-Akkent. Ich komme aus Kalifornien. Wie würde ein Deutscher sagen, Kalifornien?
Ich komme aus Berlin und bin aber nicht hier geboren worden, sondern ich komme aus Thüringen.
Ich komme aus Berlin. Ich komme aus Köln. Köln. Komme aus Deutschland. Wo lebst du? Wo lebst du? Ich brauche nicht das zu wissen. Ich komme aus Ussen. Was ist Ussen? Ussen. Ich finde, das ist ein Herunterladen. Warte, lass uns das durchpassen. Leben, ich lebe in Berlin. Was ist euer Job? Ich brauche das nicht. Hobby? Nein, ich brauche nicht über mein Hobby zu reden. Lass uns sehen, lass uns sehen, was andere... Oh, warte. Ups, lass uns das hinter dem Webcam putzen. Entschuldigung, 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 es ist wibblywobbly. Oh Gott, oh Gott, Dinge passieren. Viele Dinge passieren. Okay. Ist das besser? Vielleicht, vielleicht ist das besser. Es ist, weil das Kabel, sorry, es ist das Kabel von diesem Webcam hier, dieses, dieses. Ist wie direkt vor dem VTuber-Webcam. Und so, ich glaube, es blockierte mein Gesicht, und so war ich ein wenig glitschig. Okay, so wir haben die Introduktion, so ein bisschen, wie sich selbst herunterherstellen in Deutsch. 30 Minuten. Wollt ihr wirklich Deutsch sprechen, von eurer ersten Lesung? Tag, Morgen und Abend. Oh, diese sind gut! Guten Tag! Okay, warte, also das ist "hallo". Ich hätte diese zuerst geschrieben. Okay, warte, so "guten Morgen", nein, "gut Tag" ist "guten..." Hallo, hallo. Hallo. Dann haben wir... Die häufig verwendete formalen Grußworte werden je nach Zeit verändert. Formal. Lass uns mit "guten Tag" beginnen. Okay, guten Tag, guten... Zwei Wörter, Tag. Guten Tag. Guten Tag. Guten Tag. Im Prinzip "guten Tag" bedeutet "gutes Mal". Gutes Mal. Als Regel von Spaß können wir "guten Tag" nur während des Morgens verwenden, von spät morgens bis früh Abend. In der Morgen sagen wir "Guten Morgen", "guten Morgen". Guten Morgen. Warte, wie hat sie das gesagt? In der Morgen sagen wir "Guten Morgen", "guten..." Guten Morgen. Sie hat gar nicht den "Morgen" gesagt. Guten Morn. Guten, guten Morgen. Es ist mehr wie Morn. Guten Morn. Morgen, morgen, Leute! Morgen. Guten... Oh, hallo Hermes, ja, hallo, mein süßer Junge. Ja, schaut dir dein süße Gesicht an. Ja, ja, schaut dir, schaut dir dein kleines Gesicht, schaut dir deine Lippen, schaut dir! Top of the morning to ya. Habt ihr irgendwelche Grün? Ich habe heute nicht. Ich habe niemanden gesehen, also hat niemand mich pinchen lassen. Morgen. Morgen. Guten Morgen. Sie hat es gesagt. Warum hat sie es nicht gesagt? Während der Abend sagen wir "Guten Abend". Guten Abend, guten Abend. Gut, guten... Abend. Guten Abend. Abend, Abend. Der D hört sich wie ein Tee an. Abend. Tag, Morgen und Abend ist... Tag, Morgen, Abend. Deutsch für Morgen und Abend, respectively. Einfach, richtig? Was soll man sagen, wenn man verlässt? Deutschen Menschen sprechen meistens "auf Wiedersehen". Auf, auf wieder, warte, auf Wiedersehen. Okay. Auf... Auf... W ist W, richtig? Wieder... Wieder sehen. Sehen. Wenn man verlässt in einer formalen Situation. Auf Wiedersehen. Auf Wiedersehen. Es ist wie Wiedersehen, wie "sehen" ist wie "sein", richtig? Wie Z-A-I-N. Also das ist wie Wiedersehen. Sprachausführung. Auf Wiedersehen bedeutet "tschüss". Auf Wiedersehen. Wenn wir "tschüss" sagen zu Freunden oder zu Verwandten, verwenden wir das informelle Wort "tschüss". Tschüss. Ich glaube nicht, ich sage das mit meinen Mitarbeiter, aber ich schreibe es sowieso. Tschüss. Tschüss, T-S. You, ein weird you. Oh Shit, ich habe es falsch gespelt, warte. Ich bin zu gespannt, um das weird you zu schreiben. Um, T-S. S-S, tschüss. See you later! You mit einem Umlaut. Hallo, Show, vielen Dank für die Lektion. Tschüss. Tschüss. Na... Wie, wie tschüss, wie ein Tschu und ein Kissen zusammen, tschüss. Wie Chess, aber tschüss. Nun, ihr könnt Menschen in vielen verschiedenen Weisen in Deutsch begrüßen. Lass uns das anschauen.
Let's review them all again. First, the greetings. Informally, we simply say hallo.
Hallo.
Formally, use guten Morgen in the morning.
Morgen.
Guten Tag.
Guten Tag.
And guten Abend in the evening.
Abend.
When leaving in a formal situation.
Auf Wiedersehen.
Auf Wiedersehen.
Auf Wiedersehen.
In an informal situation.
Auf Wiedersehen. Tschüss.
Easy, isn't it? Now it's time for Laura's insights. Due to a huge variety of dialects in Germany.
Oh, dialects.
You might hear many different greeting phrases depending on the area.
Uh-oh.
In Austria and in the Catholic southern part of Germany, they even say grüß Gott, which means greetings to God.
Oh, do I need to know this? I don't think so. I mean, I don't know where, I don't know where I'm gonna be. Hold on. This is part. Ten lines you need to know for introducing.
... yourself. Let's begin. Mein Name ist Lisa.
Oh, this is the, the guy, he said that. Mein Name ist Posse.
Name ist Lisa. Mein Name ist Lisa.
Mein Name ist
Was ist dein Name?
Princess.
Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennen zu-
Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennen
lernen. Hello, it's nice to meet you. Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen. Hello.
That's really long.
Ist dein Name? Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen.
Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen.
Hello, it's nice to meet you. Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen.
Kennenzulernen, kennenzulernen. Hallo, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen.
Hello, it is nice to meet-
Okay, wait, this is I feel like this is, uh, out of order, but okay. Ah, yes, German takes words and smashes them together to make new words. Okay, hallo, hallo. Es ist, es ist schön S-A, oh, God, C-H, so spelled so weird. Schön, Z. So this S-I-E is pronounced like Z, I think. And then kennenzulernen. Hen, I don't think I have space. Kennen du lernen, lernen. Okay.
Meet you. As in English, when you introduce yourself and you meet somebody for the first time, you just add, of course, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen, it is nice.
Es ist, es ist schön Sie kennen kennenlernen. She didn't even say the zoo. What? She skipped a syllable.
Add, of course, es ist schön Sie kennen-
See, it, she took out the zoo in the middle, right? Am I blind? Yes, hello, mommy is very confused right now, Hermes.
You meet somebody for the first time, you just add, of course, es ist schön Sie kennenzulernen, it is nice.
But she said it. She said zu lernen, kennenlernen. Uh, the longest word in German is Kraftfahrzeug hat Fleisch Schirr Ver Schirr. Loosely translates to motor vehicle liability insurance. I mean, they could have made it four words. Why did they have to make it one? I know the Panzerkampfwagenfour. What is that? What's that?
Meet you. Eines meiner Hobbys ist mit meinem Hund spazieren zu gehen. One of my hobbies is to-
I need to learn how to say this. Uh. Eins, oh, God, she said it so fast. Hold on.
Meet you. Eines meiner Hobbys ist-
Eines meiner Hobbys
mit meinem Hund spazieren zu gehen.
Oh, God.
Hobbys ist mit meinem Hund spazieren zu-
Ist es mit meinen Hund? No.
zu gehen.
I don't know, no, I give up. I don't, I, that's too complicated for me. I don't know if I could say those words together.
Jahre alt. Ein, dot, 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 years old. Wie alt bist du? How old are you? Ich bin Grafik- und Textildesignerin. I'm a graphic and textile designer. Ich bin is used for many, many things. It's something you should definitely learn and memorize because it's for almost-
Why is it, I thought it was heiße. I thought heiße was M. Why is it also B?
Most everything. Ich, ich bin hungrig, I'm hungry. So ich bin in this case is referred to your profession. So please tell me, what do you do?
Hmm, interesting. Okay. Um, okay, so that was, I think, hello. Um. Okay, wait, let's talk, let's, let's do, um, let's do, uh, ordering food. Ordering food in German. Uh, learn how to order food. Twenty-two useful sentences. I think this would be good.
Hallo Leute.
Point and stare. No, don't. Stop it. I can't say that word. Those words put together were really complicated.
Habt ihr unser Video gesehen, in dem wir euch nützliche Sätze vorgestellt haben, die ihren Telefonaten nutzen könnt? Heute und auch in Zukunft möchten wir euch weitere Telefonsituationen vorstellen, damit ihr für jedes Telefonat auf Deutsch gewappnet seid. Los geht's. Heute geht es um das Thema Essen über das Telefon.
Oh, ordering food on the telephone? I don't need to know that. I just want to order food in the restaurant. Is it all telephone? It's all telephone. Hold on, back up. Um. Restaurant edition, German phrases.
What's up, everybody? We are Deanna and Phil. Deanna here is from the United States and I, Phil, am from Germany. And in this video, we're gonna go over German phrases to use in a restaurant.
Food.
So I am learning German very langsam. Is that correct? Pretty slowly. And I always think these videos help when we go over the phrases because when I edit them and rewatch them, it's awesome. Just to note, we are gonna use the American and German flags because those are the countries we're from. We obviously know other countries speak those languages. But just a little disclaimer. In German-
What if the restaurant needs you to order through the phone after you sit down at the table? That's cruel. That's, that, I feel like that's cruel and unusual punishment.
The restaurant translates to das Restaurant?
Yeah, das Restaurant.
Das Restaurant.
Kind of try to use the, uh, proper French pronunciation, which is restaurant.
Restaurant.
Restaurant, but, uh,
Restaurant. That's kind of French.
For everybody. And I always find it funny if Americans say a restaurant.
Restaurant. In German, there's this fun little article, das die der, and remember for restaurant, das Restaurant.
Das Restaurant. Das die der?
Not male or female, it's it, an item, das Restaurant.
Das Restaurant.
Into our first-
Oh. Welcome in. Hello, Jin. Thank you for gifting a sub to Creed. That's very sweet of you, Jin. Thank you. How are you? Happy Friday, by the way. Welcome in. Welcome, welcome.
First point, the menu and learning the menu. So in English, we would call it the menu.
In German.
In German. I need to read it.
Oh, hold on. So restaurant? Restaurant is das Restaurant. Thank you, Chrono, for shouting Jin out. I really appreciate it. I hope you've had a good Friday and a good week so far, Jin. Welcome in. We are just learning some, um, some German tonight because I, uh, um, what is it? I am going to Germany next week and it's the first time I'm traveling for work that they don't speak English natively there. So, um, I wanna, you know, I just wanna be a show off. Uh, menu. The menu is let's, let's hear it.
Speisekarte?
Speisekarte.
Speisekarte.
Speisekarte. Die Speisekarte. Die Speisekarte. So the pronoun spot, like spy kids. Wait, I spelled it wrong. Can't even spell in English. Sp- Speise- Karte. Die Speisekarte.
Also Speisekarte means meal card, basically.
Speisekarte. Oh, I see. Speise is food. Karte is like paper.
Basically. So a German could also say, I would like to see the cart. And, um, that's could also be confusing to an American. So there's a little bit of confusion with the words meal versus menu. Because menu in Germany, menü, we often use in places like fast food chains like McDonald's for a meal.
Yeah.
Oh, like, um, oh, okay, das Menü. Das Menü is like like a, like a like a set meal. Okay.
Like a number one combo would be a menu.
Yeah, so, so a lot of Germans do that wrong. And if at McDonald's, somebody asks you, do you want just the burger? And the German says, uh, now I want the menu. That is the meal in German. So that's a little bit confusing. It's-
Oh, that's kind of good to know. Um, the meal, the combo, the meal slash combo. Das Menü. Menü. How do I, how do I, how do I write, like, how to pronounce that? Das, das Menü. Men, Menü, Men, Me, Me, Men, Men. Menü. That should be good. Menü. Oh, you're so smart. Men you. There we go.
It's a little bit funny.
Menü. Hello, Gunny. Can we get a shout out for Gunny? Welcome in. How are you? I hope you're having a good evening. Happy Friday. Are you working tonight? Are you working? Wow, so many mods in my chat tonight. No shout outs for Gunny? Jin, stop shouting yourself out. Stop abusing mod privileges. I'll kill you for, no, I'm, no, I'm sorry, to which I didn't say that.
And a lot of Germans tend to do that wrong.
So in Germany, most of the times they'll already bring you a menu, but in case you need to ask for one at the beginning or just ask to see it again, you can say, can I see the menu, please?
Can I see them? That's a whole sentence. That's a whole ass sentence. Delete the mod. Gunny shouted himself out or Gunny shouted Jin out so that we wouldn't be able to shout him out. I see. Can I see? Can I see the menu? Okay.
German would be?
Well, one of the versions you could say is kann ich bitte die Karte sehen?
Oh, my God. Kann ich bitte die Karte sehen? Kann kann ich bitte bitte die Karte sehen? Karte sehen?
Sehen, or kann ich bitte die Speisekarte?
Oh, my God. Kann ich, can I, how do I, I don't want to see the thing. Can that disappear? Uh, okay, so this is one. So two is kann ich bitte, ich bitte die die Speisekarte? Speise, Speise Karte? Hold on, I need to like embiggen this so I can see what this is. Sehen, sehen, se- en. Okay. Sorry.
Zehen.
I like the abbreviated-
Zien. Okay, Z, Zien. Just want to take my spotlight. Gunny's so toxic. Oh, you too.
Karte instead of Speisekarte? Because I cannot remember that the same word.
Die Karte? Oh, both are okay.
Bitte die Karte sehen?
Yeah.
Sehen. Sehen. Kann, kann ich bitte die Karte sehen? Kann, kann ich bitte die Speisekarte se- sehen? Did I say that right?
They would understand that.
Yeah. And then once you get the menu, you're probably gonna see a lot of German words.
Ah, German words.
Menu quickly on the different categories you'll most likely see. So the first one would be drinks, which is Gettrinke?
Yeah.
Trinke?
Getränke.
I'm so nervous to say-
Getränke, get drank, getlenke. Drinks. This is important. Food is really big when I travel, you guys. Drinks, getlenke. Ge- drank, drank. A drank, a drank.
Say the words.
Yeah, it's always funny with it, with the A with the dots on top, but getränke, yeah, would be drink.
Final letters. The next category would most likely be appetizers or starters. Some people call them in English.
Froschbeizen.
Wachbeizen. Wachsp- wach, wachbeizen. Appetizer. Appetizers. Uh, wach, wach, wachbeizen. War- speizen. Beizen. Let me just double check that that's spelled right and pronounced right.
Beizen.
Froschbeizen.
Yeah, so appetizers, froschbeizen means pre dishes, basically.
Pre dishes.
Froschbeizen.
Oh, so var is like pre and spices, food. Oh, my God. I'm getting it, you guys.
So the next category you'll probably see is meal or entree section, which-
Entree? Is it speise?
Would be Hauptgerichte?
Nope.
Hauptgerichte, yeah.
Hauptgerichte. Hauptgerichte. Haupt Ha- Hauptgerichte, Ger, Ger, oh, my God. Why are these words so hard to, to sound out in my mouth? Hauptgerichte. Okay, hold on. I'm just gonna back it up. Back it up, back it up.
Die Hauptgerichte?
Hauptgerichte, yeah.
Hauptgerichte. Hauptgerichte, rische, like rich, rische. You don't really pronounce the T. Silent T. Silent T. Hauptgerichte.
Gerichte.
So it's basically almost directly translated from Main Kurses. Main Hauptkursgericht. Hauptgericht.
Gericht. Gericht.
Okay, and then next-
Do they roll their Rs? Gericht, Gericht. Haupt, Hauptgericht.
It's my favorite section. Desserts, which is nachspeisen?
Yeah, nachspeisen.
Speisen.
Yeah.
Nachspeisen, desserts. Is that like after food? Desserts. Nach nach Speisen. Sch, sch, bei, sch- Speisen.
Speisen.
So basically post dishes and the speisen reoccurs.
Yes, the hard speisen.
Speisen.
Alright, section number two is gonna be ordering in German.
Ordering.
So most likely the server, the waiter waitress will come up to you and ask, what would
The T ending there sounds more like a DE. Hauptgerichte. Oh, okay, Hauptgerichte. Hauptgerichte.
Do you like to eat or what would you like to drink?
And you better be ready.
You better be ready. So what would you like to drink in German is?
Was möchten Sie trinken?
Was möchten Sie trinken? Okay, so trinken, if I hear trinken, it's time to order drinks. Okay, so trinken, if I hear trinken, it's time to order drinks. What would you like to drink? What would you like to drink? Uh, was möchten Sie trinken? This is was- Mo- mochten? Nochten Sie trinken? Sie trinken.
Trinken.
Was möchten Sie trinken?
Was möchten Sie trinken? Oh, and then eat is the essen. Hmm, same thing, the essen. Eat. Why write more when you can say more with less?
Was möchten Sie essen?
It's important to do that, huh?
Was, was möchten Sie trinken?
When I speak German, it's horrible.
No, but sounds okay, alright.
They may ask in other ways, but that's probably one of the ones you'll hear most likely. And then the response would most likely be, "I would like to have a blank for drink or food." So I would like to have a Fanta.
Very German. Ich hätte gerne eine Fanta.
Oh my god, that's so long! Ich hatte gerne ein Fanta! Okay, um, I would like to have a... Is- Is the ein in front of Fanta? An article? Or is it constant when you say, "I would like to have"? But maybe they're gonna give more examples, hold on. I would like to have. I would like to have is ich- Ich hatte- Ich hatte gerne ein- Ge- gerne- Ein blank. It's just there to confuse you. Ein is a, oh, okay, this is a.
Ich hätte gerne eine Fanta bitte.
Bitte, yeah, you can always-
Bi- bitte, bitte. Bitch, please! Okay, sorry. Ein bitte, please. It just sounded like bitch.
Always add another bitter at the end, but the hätte gerne is already a polite version.
Hätte gerne is already polite, so we don't have to, this is parentheses.
And that's the correct version to order stuff.
Intrusive thoughts one.
Ich hätte gerne eine Fanta.
Ich hätte gerne eine Fanta bitte. I'll just add in as much politeness as I can because I'll probably mess up somewhere.
Is it like, are German people super formal then? Like, do they? So do they care a lot about whether something is like formal or not?
It just feels better. So if you wanna order an actual meal or food, you could say, "I would like a pizza."
Ich hätte gerne eine Pizza.
Yeah.
Okay, ich ha- ich hatte gerne eine Pizza. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna write down this example. Ich hatte gerne eine Pizza.
Yeah, so you use, for everything, it's very easy and you just change the blank in the end.
Change the blank, then you're good to go. Also, if you're trying to be healthy, you can order-
Oh, the air, eine is part of the blank. Okay, so it's like this entire thing. So I guess if the meal changes, then the article in front might change as well.
Order a salad, so it could be, "I would like this salad, please." So, ich hätte gerne diesen Salat bitte?
Yeah.
Okay, so this salad. This salad would be ich hatte gerne diesen Salat. Diesen Salat.
Ah, that's very nice. Ich hätte gerne diesen Salat.
Diesen Salat.
You have to point to it, because there's a little room for error when it comes to the word salad. As a German, in a restaurant environment, we would distinguish more. You would say, "I would like to have the Caesar salad," or "I would like to have the Greek salad."
Diesen Salat.
Because if you use the word salad in your household, in a kitchen environment, it means just lettuce for us.
Yes.
So a lot of Germans use that wrong oftentimes when they say, "Can you pass me the salad?" And that really mean just the lettuce.
Because in German, salad, it means actual lettuce, but it also means a prepared salad that we're used to as well.
Interesting.
Yeah, can be confusing.
Guys, before we continue, please subscribe to our channel if you wanna see more videos like that or just more about us. About ninety percent of you are not subscribed, so just hit that button, it's down here below.
I ordered a salad in sack. Was it good?
If you wanna support us further, we also have a Patreon page, it's patreon.com/dianaandphil. And you can support us there, and it really helps us keep this channel going.
You know, I never order salad when I go out. Because in my opinion, I would rather like eat out and have like- They just gave me a quarter of a head of lettuce. Oh, no. See? Point taken. You don't never order salad at a restaurant. They'll just give you a wedge of lettuce and be like, "Here you go, that's your meal." Maybe they'll like crumble some bacon over it. Maybe a sprinkle of red onion and like a handful of like blue cheese or whatever. Um, but you know, very low effort. What do you mean it's a wedge salad? It's a wedge of a, a head of lettuce, you know?
And for us just to create more videos.
We have four different tiers at the moment, and we wanted to take a moment to thank our soulmate and family level patrons. Our soulmate level patron, Ricky, thank you so much, you're awesome.
At forty-two and-
All these thank yous. Oh, without onions, this is important.
You could say, "I would like a kebab without onions and with spicy sauce."
Exactly. Very important to know that sentence in Germany, and it would be, ich hätte gerne-
Oh god, okay. Um, okay, so I would like... I would like a donor kebab. Donor kebab. Without onions. Onions. And with spicy sauce. Okay, so. It's ich hatte gerne einen. Ich hatte gerne ein- Nen- donor. On- uh, ohne? Well, he'll pronounce it, I'm sure. What is zwieblen? Zwiebeln. Zwie- zwier- zwiebeln, zwiebeln. Und meat? Scharfer- Scharfer sauce.
Einen Döner ohne Zwiebeln, aber mit scharfer Sauce.
Ohne Zwiebeln?
Oh, you need your ohne, without, and mit, with.
Ohne, without, okay, wait, so let's do circle for without, is on- ohne? With is, okay, I'll do a box for with. With meat, okay.
It's good to remember mit, with, onen, without.
Exactly, so what would be the Döner sentence? "I would like to have a Döner without onions and with spicy sauce, please."
Ich hätte gerne einen Hühnchen-Döner ohne Zwie-
Döner, Döner, that's a weird way, okay. Döner, Dö- Döner, Dö- Döner?
Zwiebeln und mit scharfer Sauce.
Wait, hold on.
Or without a certain ingredient. And whenever I would order a Döner kebab, you could say, "I would like a kebab without onions and with spicy sauce."
Exactly. Very important to know that sentence in Germany, and it would be, ich hätte gerne einen Döner ohne Zwiebeln.
Ohne Zwie- Zwiebeln?
Aber mit scharfer Sauce. So you need your-
Aber, he said aber, but is und meat?
Ohne, without, and mit, with.
It's good to remember mit, with, onen, without.
Exactly, so what would be the Döner?
Mit, like oven, mit, mit.
Sentence, "I would like to have a Döner without onions and with spicy sauce, please."
Ich hätte gerne einen Hühnchen-Döner ohne Zwiebeln.
Zwiebeln, Zwiebeln.
Und mit scharfer Sauce.
Yeah.
Und mit scharfer Sauce.
So you're fine, you added the chicken kebab, very nice.
Oh yeah, I like the chicken kebab.
Alright.
I would always make this mistake at the beginning because I would, I would say kein means not.
No.
No, so I would always say kein Zwiebel bitte, meaning no onions, please?
Yeah, keine Zwiebeln bitte, or kein ketchup. It's perfectly fine, it's just a little more straightforward and direct, not the most polite version.
Ah, I see.
It's like you order one kebab, please, no onions, please, it's perfectly fine. But the correct version, the polite version, would be without, ohne. And you'd say, ohne Zwiebeln bitte. Without-
On- on, how does he say that, what?
Out, ohne, and you'd say-
Una, like owner, u- o- owner, on- on, owner. Owner.
ohne Zwiebel bitte, without onions, please.
Yeah, I mean, they had no problem understanding me, but I'd just like to use the proper term, the more polite term.
Yeah, I think you should always be polite when ordering food and dealing with waiters and people who prepare your food.
Yeah.
Without onions, this is an important one, without... How do I say raw onions? Without onions, please. So it's ohne, ohne Zwie- Zwiebeln? Bitte, bitte. Oh my goodness, hello! Welcome in raiders, hello, how are you Lost? Welcome in, hello! How is everyone? Hi. Um, we're studying. Oh, wait, uh, hallo, guten Abend. Ich heiße Princess. So studying's going great. Hi, everyone, my name's Princess. Today, we're studying some German, um, because I have to know just a little bit, like survival German. Um, cuz I'm going on a work trip next week. We're, we're learning how to order food right now. Hello, Agoritas, welcome in, Lost, how are you? What were you up to? Welcome in. Uh, let me see here. Uh, hallo, Prinzessin, mir geht es gut. Hab gerade etwas- Gels- gesp- final Fantasy thirteen. Sorry for, uh, speaking German really badly. Um, I, uh, don't even know the, the alphabet in German, so I'm sorry. Um, Lost was playing some, uh, Final Fantasy thirteen, let's take a look, uh, here. Let me see if I can turn off my Spotify for a second here. Um, I'll also turn this off for a second. I remember very little from school. Maybe I should be doing this. Um, it might be better. Uh, it's okay, I wouldn't know if it were good or bad anyways. Oh, some Mario Kart?
It's not that it's dumb, I just don't really-
Is this Mario Kart? This doesn't look like Mario Kart.
I was super into Mega Man cuz I was a kid, so it's Mega Man really-
What game is this? Kart Riders, Drift Dailies, and then Final Fantasy thirteen.
That aside, they were like, "Well, you need to come up with a Jedi name to be on the server." And I was like, "I don't know Star Wars."
Gangkeeping, man!
And that's what we came up with.
Final lap, did you end up winning?
I do remember your other name now.
Let's see, you keep hitting the wall, Lost, what are you doing? Someone just right behind you. Come on, Lost, come on, Lost. You're almost there.
I guess.
Did you make it? Did you make second place? Uh-oh, uh-oh, coming in hot, coming in so hot! Okay, there you go. There you go. Oh, my cute characters, how adorable! Uh, it's like Crash Team Racing, but free to play, quite good, no! And then some FF thirteen here? Did you just start, or is this like a... Continuation of, uh... You were playing like, um, Lightning, was it Lightning Returns? I eventually want to play FF thirteen. It looks very pretty, and Lightning just seems like such a cool main character, you know? Sound is really quiet here, hold on, let me turn it up. Is this, um, FF thirteen, or is this like, uh, another spinoff of thirteen? Kart Riders is really fun. I went back, restarted the OG game cuz I wanted to a hundred percent it on PC. Gotcha, okay, I see, I see. So... You did, um, start it again. So this is like the, the, the real Final Fantasy thirteen game. Anyways, thank you so much for coming in, Lost, thank you for the raid. I really appreciate you bringing your friends here. Um, we are... Studying. I don't know if you can call it that. We're just goofing around, um, I'm, you know, learning how to speck- sprechen sie Deutsch. Um, oh yes, we did get raided, um. And I'm learning how to, thank you for the shout out, I appreciate it, Kono. Um, I'm learning right now how to order, okay, wait, so what have we learned so far? Um, I can turn my other camera on again. Desk cam, okay. So so far, we've learned. Ich heiße Princess, or mein Name ist Princess. Um, and then ich komme aus California. Then I have hallo, guten Tag, guten Morgen, guten Abend. Auf Wiedersehen and tschüss. And then we also, at least try to say California in a German accent. No, why should I? From California. Oh, and then nice to meet you is hallo, es ist schön, die Canon zu lernen. Yes, Canon, Canon zu lernen. Schön, die, schön, die Canon zu lernen. And then we've been learning food. And then we've been learning food. So the menu is called die Speisekarte. Uh, a meal combo is das Menue. Uh, and then can I see the menu is kann ich bitte die Karte sehen? Can you guys see? Is it like picking up my handwriting? Oh, it's pretty clear, I think. Um, or ka- ka- is it kann? Kann ich bitte die Speisekarte sehen? Yeah. Yeah. And then we have good tra- good drank, good trank, good drank is drinks. Vor speisen is appetizers. Hauptgerichte, entree. Nachspeisen, dessert. What would you like to drink? Was möchten Sie trinken? And sie essen is eat. And I would like to have ich, ich hatte gerne eine... Something. Eine Pizza, or ich hatte gerne diesen Salat, Salat, Salat? Salat? And we've been learning without, uh, and man, I like barely learned anything and it's been like two hours. No, it's only been an hour since we started. I'm exaggerating.
Alright, and point number four is paying or dealing with the check.
Yes. In Germany, you most likely have to ask for the check. They're not just gonna bring it to you.
Totally.
You're gonna have to ask for it. So you would ask, can I have the check, please?
Yeah, and in German, we would usually ask a little different. You would say, can I pay, please? Which in Germany is kann ich bezahlen bitte?
Kann ich, oh, okay, can. So can, can is just kann, can. Um... And just pronounce like can. Kann ich bezahlen bitte? Okay, I need to learn how to say raw onions cuz I hate raw onions. Okay, just a note there. Um, can I pay, please? Can I pay, please? Ka- can, kann ich, kann ich bezahlen bitte? Can... Ich bezahlen? Excuse me, sorry. Bitte. Why is the word for pay so long?
Or kann ich bitte bezahlen?
Bezahlen. Kann ich bitte bezahlen? Um, so this is one, two. Kann ich bitte? Bitte? Bisa- Bisa- allen?
Kann ich bezahlen bitte?
Exactly.
Can I pay, please?
Yeah. And I don't think in America that's common. If I ask, uh, can I pay, please?
Yeah.
Like, what's the response? I don't know if you can.
And in the US, when you normally ask, can I have the check, please? It's just a little more polite and people would be like, of course you can pay.
I guess like, in Japanese, it's kinda the same cuz you say okaikei shite kudasai. Um, and okaikei is like, oh, hi, Martine, welcome in. Um, okaikei is like calculate. Um, so can I get, I guess like to calculate would kind of be like the bill. So okaikei shite kudasai. Um, cuz the o turns the kaikai. Instead of like a verb, it becomes a noun. Okaikei. So okaikei is like the bill. Shite kudasai. Cuz you know, like, or like, it's, kaikai is like tally, right? Like, when, in Japanese, when they say they're tallying the results, um, they use the word kaikai. Hi, Sadako. Hi, Martine. If you don't know, um, Martine is referencing this picture that I posted today. Um, where I, um... If you follow me on Twitter, you would have seen this today. This is me, uh, from several years ago when I visited Kyoto. And, um, you know, I got, I'm blessed with luck. Um, told you I stalked the Twitters. Nice hair. So, um, I'm blessed with luck now because this, uh, cutout in the pillar. So I think it, I think online, they said it was thirty by thirty-seven centimeters, the, the rectangle. And then the width of the pillar is a hundred ten centimeters. So it's supposed to be the size of the nostril of the Buddha statue. And if you can climb through it, um, you are blessed with luck. So, uh, Facebook was like, hey, uh, you might want to see this memory from, you know, X years ago. And it was just like a picture, a series of pictures. It started with just my head here and my hand sticking out. And like, I was wearing red shoes. You could see the red shoes on the left side. And then like this second picture is like me literally like pushing and pulling my way out. And then the last, the third picture was me, uh, kind of getting up. And the last picture was me just, you know, doing a peace sign. Uh, a very Japanese, you know, peace. Um, so... It was, you know, and like, you can see, there are so many people that put their hands where my hand was because, uh, they're just, you know, trying to like force themselves to like through, get through the hole. What do they do if someone actually gets stuck, stuck? Um, they have people helping to like pull, I guess, or push. I think like, the thing is, if you can get your shoulders through, then you probably can get the rest of your body through. I think if people are scared they're gonna get stuck, they just don't try it. Cuz like thirty centimeters? Don't even know. Yeah, so thirty centimeters is about twelve inches. So it's that, I think it's like thirty centimeters high. And then thirty-seven centimeters, you just add like that much more. So like, you add three inches. So it's twelve by fifteen, if that helps. Twelve inches by fifteen inches of a little bit, I guess, like bigger than a piece of paper. Um, so if you have hips wider than thirty inches, you probably can't... Cuz fifteen doubled, right? Half of your, half of your hip size has to be fifteen. So if your hip size is bigger than thirty, I don't think you can squeeze yourself through. But I mean, most people, you know. My feet are longer. But you can point your toes, right? It's like these things you can just point or like, you know, with your shoulders. Instead of going straight through, you can like tilt your shoulders so that you go like one shoulder through first. Um, but yeah, so... Yeah, you know. It's just, but I wear a size seventeen. I don't know what's, I don't know shoe sizes that well, so, um, that, uh, doesn't mean anything to me. I apologize. But yeah, that's why, uh, Martine came in swinging, calling me Sadako today cuz, um, I, I posted this picture and I do quite look like Sadako craw- crawling out of, um, out of the TV.
Like, like, do you have the ability to pay?
Yeah.
Should become what you hate.
You have to.
Yeah.
But in German, uh, you would phrase it like that, I guess, most of the times. And it's kann ich bitte bezahlen?
Kann ich bitte bezahlen?
Kann ich bitte bezahlen? Bezahlen. Kann, kann, kann ich bitte bezahlen?
And then they'd be like, sure, I'll come to you in a minute.
And normally, when they come to you, they will ask, is it together or separate?
Together or separate. Okay, this is important to know. Together or separate.
A bigger party, more than two people, and it's obvious that you're not a family or whatever. They ask zusammen oder getrennt?
Zu- zusammen? Zu- zusammen? Or oder getrennt? Oder? Getrennt, getrennt. Size seventeen is right at thirteen inches, heel to toe. Oh, wow. That's a huge foot, Martine. Wait, how big's my foot?
I'm gonna measure it.
I don't know my actual foot size. I think I have big feet. I have, oh, it's nine. My feet are nine inches long. And heel to toe, nine inches. I'm a size... I don't know. What size is that? Hold on. Ooh, that's Hermes. Sorry. You can't see my phone? It's my personal phone and all my personal, uh, messages. Uh, size, US size in inches. US shoe sizes in inches. Uh... Women's. So nine inches, that's not right. That's a size six. I'm a size seven. So I guess it's like, eh, nine and a half, I guess. Something like that. Um, one second. Actually, uh... Oh, were you sleepy? I'm sorry, buddy. Were you sleepy? Yeah, we're sleepy. I just go over to pet Hermes on the couch and he's like, he like starts as I touch his face. Oh, cuz he was sleepy. I'm sorry, buddy. I'm sorry for waking you. Um, I'm here back. I'm gonna grab some dinner, uh, before we continue with this. Um, might, this might turn into a mukbang stream. I'm sorry, you guys. Um, leave now, uh, or forever hold your peace. Hello, Tropical. Welcome in. Give me a second. Give me a couple minutes. I'm gonna go grab some food. I'm gonna refill on water as well. Um, and I will be back because we have more German to study. And I'll fill up this pitcher of water, so. Boop for Hermes. Oh, it's a boop from Tropical. There you go. Boop. Okay. Um... B R B. Alright, guys. I'm back. Hello. Ugh, what do you guys think is for dinner tonight? Sorry that took so long. What's for dinner? What are we having? Ramen? It's not ramen. If it was ramen, you'd be able to hear me do some epic slurping noises. Um, today's dinner. My favorite dinner. Lemon grass, boom? No to all of those. Pizza rice with meat? It is... Steak? Uh, wait, you are not having food? I am having food. I'm sorry, I'm eating on stream. If this bothers you, I need you to not be here. I also, I al- or mute, or mute, right? I also poured myself a nice cup of glass of red wine. Don't know if you guys can see it. You said no to all of us, oh. I did say no to all of you guys cuz it was all wrong. Also, do you guys eat steak with wasabi? Cuz I do. Cuz like... Princess eating ASMR. Hello Jonja boy, welcome in. Yeah, I'm pausing my German learning for, uh, some dinner and then we will continue. I like eating steak with wasabi cuz like, it cuts through the richness. Why would I eat steaks with wasabi? It's really good, you know? Just take a, a smudge of some wasabi. Mmm. Best way to eat a steak, I guarantee it. Delicious. But I said food, so I was right. You can understand if you need to balance a taste value, yes. It's like, um, the wasabi helps to balance how rich... This, the, the steak is. I usually get like ribeyes, so it cuts through like some of the fat, you know? I don't even know if you guys can like see the pieces of steak I'm cutting. It's so good. Mmm, if you guys could eat one thing for the rest of your life... And like... Not develop health problems from it? What would you guys eat? I don't know. My answer? Would probably be pho. But... I feel like steak and pho would be... Right up against each other. Sausage and meatball pizza. You know? That's surprisingly balanced. You got your protein, you got your dairy, you got your carb. You got your, um... Fruits and vegetables from the tomato sauce. Also, I like my steak cooked super rare, you guys. I don't know if you guys can see how red the steak is. Oops, sorry. It's like very red. You guys see it? It's like... Very red. I have barbecue sauce. Oh, I see. Barbecue sauce on sausage and meatball pizza. Interesting choice. She's a vampire? Oh, hot pot's a good choice because hot pot is very like balanced. It has a lot of flavors. Good choice, good choice. I mean, if I wanted to cook, like if I wanted super cooked meat, I would eat a stew. I like mine rare. Also, I feel like... When I go to restaurants and I order my steak like medium rare... They always cook it more medium than anything, so I always order my steak at restaurants like basically rare. And then they cook it right. Genshin because of the new event, this event needs to focus. Luckily I got my answer through. Oh! Well, congratulations. Glad you were able to get your Genshin stuff done. The only downside to having like a rarer steak is I feel like the meat is kinda hard to cut through cuz it's still partially raw. Technically. This, uh, uh, this, I don't know if you can see, it's like garlic. What's a vampire's least favorite steak? I don't know. What is a vampire's least favorite steak? Oh. A wood steak, I see. Cuz they get staked through the heart action with wood. And that would kill them. The corn is so good. I should love corn. I love, um... The Vietnamese corn dessert. My favorite. So delicious. That would kill them. I see Tropical. I see. You go in there. I also need to drink my wine. Just wash it down. I'll leave now? No, stay! What are you guys eating for dinner tonight? Since you guys have seen my dinner, what are you guys having over there? Or what did you have if you have already eaten dinner? Homemade spicy tacos, ooh! It's been a while since I had tacos. Tacos actually sound delicious. What kind of meat did you use Martine? Are they like, um, like chicken tacos, steak tacos, pork tacos? What kind of tacos you, you talking about? Is it, is it like, um, is it the birria? The birria tacos? I ate rice with meat and leftovers. Also sounds delicious. I had corned beef. Bops, bread rolls. Is that what you call a bread roll, a bop? I know when I was, um, in, like, Nuneaton for work... Everyone was like, what do you call like a bread roll? And like, they were like, we call it like a batch or a cob. And I was like... I have never heard of those words. Like, in terms of bread. And everyone was arguing like, no, you know, here we call it a batch and then over there they call it a cob. I guess you call it a baps? But corned beef sounds delicious. You know what I'm excited to try in Germany? I've never had sauerkraut before, so I'm really excited to try sauerkraut when I'm there. Need a little tissue. Bless you Hermes! You know where you went to the UK? No. Yes. I was in the Nuneaton Coventry area. When I was there. Baby sneeze, he did, he did a little sneeze. It was a really nice area. Everyone was really nice, um... We went, me and my coworker went into Coventry on like the first weekend we had. And we went out. It got kinda sketch at night though. But... I mean, it was fun. And then the weekend after that, we went to, um... Oh god, what was the castle called? Woolby? Woolby Castle? Is that what it was? Hmm. I really wanted to go to Shakespeare's home... Near there. But it was like, if we were gonna go, it was like a huge detour. And also doing the castle that same day. Um... Just didn't give us enough time. So... It was, um, we had to give up on going to, to Shakespeare's house. Kinda sad, but... I just really enjoy like doing historical stuff, you know? I find that very fun when you travel. How dare you be that close to me? Oh, are you in that area? Are you in like the, what was it called? Um, what's the biggest city? Next to that, um... What's that airport there called? I don't remember. Oh god. Cuz it's not, it's not the airport in Birmingham, yes. Birmingham. Are you, are you around there? I was gonna say Buckingham, but then I was like, no, that's the palace. That's definitely not right. That's the palace. North Midlands, so... Are you in like Coventry then? Cuz I know Coventry, or are you even further north than Coventry? Is Nuneaton above Coventry? I think Nuneaton is north of Coventry. I didn't go as far as Nuneaton. It's too far. I won't say more. I see, yes, don't, because you'll dock yourself. Don't do it. But yes, I was basically in your backyard. I did try Indian food. Honestly? It was okay, but it wasn't like life-changing for me. I thought it would be better cuz I know... Some people say they go to the UK. They're like, ah, the In- the Indian food is so good. I thought it was just okay. Wasn't too crazy. I should've given myself more corn. Corn has to be like my favorite. Is it like a vegetable? Corn is like my favorite vegetable. So yummy. Let's just cut this piece apart. I'll eat the outside piece last cuz I feel like that is usually the piece that has all of the gristle and stuff, and I love that stuff. That's my favorite part of the steak is like the chewy bits. So... I like to save it so that I can savor the last bite. When you guys eat... Ooh, the wasabi got me. When you guys eat, do you guys like plan out what your last bite is gonna be? Do you like, do you like look around your plate? And think about how you're gonna end the meal? Cuz I do. I feel like the entire time I'm eating, I'm like looking at what I'll cut off last. So that I have the most perfect last bite. Eating what you think is the best for last is a nice thing, right? Do you do that too then, Action? Are you also like, um, planning your last bite as you eat your food? And soak in all of this delicious juice? Flavor? Get some wasabi on it? Yum. I can't eat steak without wasabi. I mean, I can. But in my opinion, it doesn't taste as good. Indeed, I do. Wasabi is just... Definitely getting to me. My eyes are so watery right now. Genshin event needs to be, to stay focused. You got this, Action. You totally got this. Focus on Genshin. I'm always worried. Like, ever since the cooking stream and Chrono, like, telling me, hey, watch out for this, watch out for reflections. Now I'm like always worried, I'm like... Is this the one thing that's gonna Xbox me? To the entire internet? Very scary. Because all of the liquids and stuff, you know, are reflective as well. All the glass things. Reflective. Utensils are reflective. Just flat pieces of metal. I should've put some TV on while we were, um, while we were chowing down. Do you guys like spend an hour and a half finding something to eat while you, finding something to watch while you eat? And then you eat your food in five minutes and then you look at the TV and you're like, I don't wanna watch this anymore? Cuz I definitely do that. I feel like I do that quite often and I'm like... I should just have a show that I can just fall back on? To just put on TV? It's fine, the hands and reflections are just the actor you hire. Very true. Very true, Tropical. It just drives the model, who is me, princess. Pink-haired anime girl. This piece was quite chewy. I feel like I should've saved that for last. It didn't look like it was gonna be chewy from when I was cutting it. I feel bad when I waste wasabi, so if, even if I squeeze myself for like a big blob, I feel like I'm obligated to like use all of it. This is Jichin the blonde from her profile pic. Which also gives me an idea. I have yet to do, won't tell you, want it to be a surprise. Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to your surprise. Action. I'm sure... It will be very fun. Dip it in all of the sauce that leaked out. The delicious, delicious juices. You know, I never tried to make a pan sauce with the steak drippings. But I think if I did try, maybe like a mushroom? With like, um... Red wine sauce. That might be kinda good. But... Feel like sauces take so long to make. I would say how crazy if I walked past you in the street, but I think I would recognize the accent and or laugh. That's true, cuz I feel like a lot of people don't walk around with an American accent. And also, I laugh like a crazy person sometimes, so... Coventry was so nice though, like... So, me and my coworker went to Saint Mary's Guild Hall, which is, um... One of the oldest, I think, still intact guild halls in the UK. And if you guys don't know what that is, um... It's basically a place where merchants and tradesmen's gather to do business. Um, and in the Saint Mary's Guild Hall... And in the Saint Mary's Guild Hall, they had like, this high tea restaurant. Not high tea. They had afternoon tea restaurant, and so I ate lunch there, which was so nice. Tea in the UK is such... A nice thing. Like... I wish we had a tea thing in America. We don't really. But I loved the tea in the UK. It's a cute laugh, but you do say such things. I was with my coworker. I was as say-so as it gets, you know? I had to be on my best behavior. I was worried about that pause.